Good afternoon. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code, Section 2-21, Virginia Code 15.2-1413, and the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted on September 15, 2020, and Chapter 1289 of the 2020 Acts of Assembly as amended, and by authority vested as me as the Mayor of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special meeting by electronic communication means of the City of Virginia Beach City Council on Tuesday, January 26, 2021, at 3:00 p.m. This special meeting by electronic means will be held virtually with the City Council participating via video and audio conference. The purpose of this special meeting is to allow the City Council to hold a regularly scheduled workshop regarding the items listed in the published agenda. The City Council meeting will be streamed live on www.vbgov.com and Facebook Live and will be recorded for rebroadcast on cable TV. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. Okay, Madam Clerk, can we please have a roll call? The City Council members.
Yes, your mayor. Vice Mayor Wood. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Berluci.
Present.
Councilmember Henley.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Moss.
Present.
Councilmember Tower. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Wooton.
Good afternoon. I...
And Mayor, Councilmember Rouse said he would be just a few minutes late.
And I'm present too.
Yes.
Real good. Now, at this point, we're going to recognize our deputy, Chief Deputy City Clerk who does a tremendous job, Terry Chelius, who will provide meeting structure and instructions.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of City Council. This is Chief Deputy City Clerk Terry Chelius. Today's meeting is being conducted electronically and is allowed as described by Mayor Dyer during his reading of the call for special session. Also, please note this meeting is being recorded. To ensure this live electronic event is successful, please note the following meeting instructions must be followed. Speakers and presenters, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing. It is important that, once recognized, please wait two to three seconds to begin speaking to ensure council hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself, and also, please do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as only one feed is open at a time to minimize the echo reverberation, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. At the conclusion of each presentation, the mayor will open the floor for questions, comments. Councilmembers, please, will be recognized in the order in which they raise their virtual hand. It is important that councilmembers hold their comments until recognized. Also, it is helpful for councilmembers to ask all questions and end by stating you will stand by for answers. This helps to ensure all questions are answered before I move on to the next councilmember. Lastly, please lower your virtual hand at the conclusion of your remarks. Mayor and members of council, are there any questions about the process?
Mayor, I don't see any virtual hands raised, so I turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Very well done. Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask, you know, our great city manager, Mr. De Haney, to, you know, introduce our privileged partners, Dominion Energy Coastal Offshore Wind Project.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. At this time, Dominion Energy will provide council with a briefing on its offshore wind project. They have had initial conversations with staff about the project, including discussions on possible routes for the power lines. They want, the next steps are to engage the public. They want to ensure that the council is briefed prior to engaging the public about the realities and also the beneficial impacts of this project. At this time, Dominion will start with a brief video on their project before they enter into their presentation.
Twenty-seven miles off the coast of Virginia Beach, secured 80 feet below the water's surface and rising 600 feet into the air, stands the future of energy in America. The two test turbines there are now producing approximately 12 megawatts of electricity, but they're also demonstrating to the world that wind energy works well in the Atlantic, more than well enough to help greenlight the construction of the additional 188 turbines that will fulfill this project's scope. It's called the Coastal Virginia Offshore Wind Project. These new turbines will be 200 feet taller and collectively generate 220 times more power than the pilot project, enough to heat and light 660,000 homes and keep Virginia on course to becoming carbon-free by 2045. And for Virginia Beach, having the first wind farm in federal waters will position both the city, Hampton Roads, and the Commonwealth of Virginia internationally as leaders in science, technology, and the use of clean and renewable energy. These turbines will even help to position the whole region as a hub for a robust wind energy supply chain that exists nowhere else in America today. In fact, a vessel is now being built that will haul equipment from the shore to the construction site. Home ported in Hampton Roads, the vessel will transport wind turbines from the terminal and install them at sea. The vessel will also be able to serve other wind farms that may follow along the eastern seaboard. This emerging industry will require the talents of dedicated men and women from a broad array of fields to fashion and maintain the blades and other equipment necessary for the Coastal Virginia Offshore Wind Project, also known as Seaval. Seaval will bring Hampton Roads into the national spotlight when it comes to clean and renewable energy, boosting the local economy, and showing our young people that the Virginia Beach area has a strong future, one that's well worth growing in or returning to for meaningful employment. Once the power comes ashore at Camp Pendleton State Military Reservation, it will be transmitted across Virginia Beach to a Dominion Energy substation near Fentress Airfield in Chesapeake. As part of the regulatory application process, Dominion Energy will develop a preferred route while also meeting an obligation to assess other options. To accomplish this, we will collaborate with localities, residents, and other stakeholders to minimize disruption and maximize the use of existing rights-of-way. That process begins now, principally in Virginia Beach and in Chesapeake, two dynamic cities in a region well positioned to take advantage of the power of the wind as it moves over our seas. And Dominion Energy stands ready to be the reliable partner needed to help grow the future prosperity of Hampton Roads, because the Coastal Virginia Offshore Wind Project is an important part of that future.
Good afternoon, Mr. Bain. If you would like, you could wait two to three seconds and then begin your presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me this afternoon. I want to thank staff and the City Council of Virginia Beach for your support and interest in this project. You know, it's one of the first of this type and scale in the nation. My name's Ed Bain. I'm president of Dominion Energy Virginia, responsible for operations in Virginia and North Carolina. And just again, want to thank you for the invitation to present to council this afternoon. I'll cover some of the highlights of the offshore wind project, talk about next steps and our commitments to you, and then I'll welcome any questions that you may have at the end. So if you go to the next slide, please. So first, a few highlights of the project. Once complete, these turbines will produce enough energy to provide power to almost 660,000 homes and businesses. In the video, you saw that the two test turbines are up and running, and we're very happy about that. Those turbines have been operational since October. And not only are they operating as we'd hope, but it gives us confidence about the 188 turbines that we'll be building to follow, and it provides valuable experience that we'll apply to that larger-scale project. And, you know, just to note, these, the 188 turbines will be built east of the two existing turbines. And the carbon-free energy generated by these turbines is equivalent to taking more of a million cars off the road each year, and it's critical to Virginia's transition to cleaner energy sources. We are invested in solar to serve our customers, but offshore wind generally peaks at different times, and it helps us to provide reliable power that our customers expect and deserve. Next slide. Next slide, please.
Are you ready? Okay, go ahead, Mr...
Did something happen with the presentation? All right, I'll give it back to you.
Mr. Bain, we're just restarting the PowerPoint. I'm sorry for the delay.
No problem. So specifically, what does this mean for Virginia Beach and the broader Hampton Roads region? You're on the leading edge of the new clean energy economy and the many jobs that come with it. Offshore wind power generation will help us address climate change and advance scientific research on renewable technology and environmental sustainability, and the schools and the universities within the region are integrally involved in that. The region can also add to its own brand and reputation as a place where nature and the environment are valued and protected. There are opportunities for local businesses to be suppliers in the project. In fact, more than 200 people attended a recent virtual roundtable held for businesses in the Hampton Roads to learn how to get involved. And as was talked about by Mayor Dyer and others in this partnership, you know, he was right on target. Our engineers and others have been working closely with your experts in public works, planning, economic development, utilities, and other departments to understand how our project, both the offshore and onshore components, fits with the city's long-term plans. As you know, you have outstanding people, and we're honored to benefit from their knowledge. Next slide, please. So in the near term, there are many state and federal, environmental, regulatory, and other approvals that are needed for this project can proceed. The Federal Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, or BOM, as we refer to, is a leading federal agency. We submitted our BOM application a little more than a month ago, but we still have plenty of work to do on that, as well as the application for our state regulators, the State Corporation Commission. In addition to reviewing the offshore work, both of these regulators will require us to bring forth a preferred path or route to get the energy from 27 miles off the coast to our customers' homes and businesses. They also require us to examine alternate routes and articulate why they are less ideal than our preferred routes. Next slide, please. So as you look at this visual, hopefully it'll make it a little easier. As was mentioned in the video, once the underwater cables come onshore at State Military Reservation Pendleton, we must get the energy onto the broader electric grid by connecting to Fentress Substation across the city line in Chesapeake. As a crow flies, it's about 13 miles from Pendleton to Fentress, but as you know, we can't go in a straight line. When planning for a new transmission corridor, we understand there's various levels of information that we need to evaluate in order to minimize, to the greatest extent possible, the impacts that inevitably come with new infrastructure. These things include environmental, historic, scenic, community, environmental justice, tribal, and municipal considerations as well. As for whether the lines will be above or below ground, you know, that's an issue that we'll study with the city, but I'll just tell you, our preference is overhead for a number of reasons, including cost, schedule, and execution risk. So, but we'll work with the city as we move through that. In developing the preferred route, and based on discussions with city representatives, we will make every effort to utilize existing right of ways and other available space. You know, as an example, we are exploring the use of part of the southeastern Parkway corridor, which the city owns, and areas where electric lines already exist. We will conduct surveys here and elsewhere to determine the best possible places for the infrastructure, and then what is feasible and what is not. Partnerships, especially in a project like this, they begin with respect, listening, and a willingness to learn from all parties before we make any decisions. Please note that our objectives and the cities are the same, to jumpstart the offshore wind industry here in the Hampton Roads while minimizing the impacts of the infrastructure within Virginia Beach and Chesapeake. While most of the onshore components will be within the city of Virginia Beach, we're also talking to Chesapeake and other areas in Hampton Roads with the same approach of respect and partnership. During the next several weeks, as was mentioned earlier, we will conduct a series of virtual roundtables and community input sessions. We provide, also provide project information. More importantly, we want to listen and collaborate with the community. We want to learn more about how the best to plan for the infrastructure, but also where it's best, how do we make sure that we localize the benefits of the project for students, workers, potential workers, and businesses. And the public can get information about those sessions by visiting our website or by contacting us at info@coastalvirginianwind.com or coastalva wind.com. Again, now I'll move through that pretty quickly, but just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. I look forward to a time when we can have future discussions in person. And with that, we'll welcome any questions you have, and we'll ask Catherine Bond and Bill Murray to help with any questions.
Any questions from councilmembers at this point?
Mayor, I see Vice Mayor Wood and then Councilmember Moss. Vice Mayor Wood, if you'll just pause two to three seconds and then begin your comments, please.
Thank you very much. I have an editorial comment and a question. First, the editorial comment. I think this is a fantastic project. I'm really looking forward to it coming to fruition. I really think this is cutting-edge technology. This is great stuff for our region, for our local, our local economy, and I really think there's a lot of opportunity there. You know, I've talked to some offshore fishermen who are very excited about this because of the structures, you know, create fishing, fishing locations, and apparently other places where these things have gone, they're very excited about it. You know, obviously, the clean energy piece of it is critically great. So anything that the city can do, you know, I'm certainly willing to advocate for it. My question is, just the timeline overall, as to when you think the, these, these non-demonstration, the actual operational turbines will be installed, and at what point will they be up and running, and if it's going to be phased or all at once, or what have you, and I'll stand by.
If you'd like to comment, wait two to three seconds, and you can begin.
So first, thank you for your comments. I appreciate your support, and just realize that I agree with you that this is cutting-edge from a clean energy perspective. And as far as schedule, the offshore wind project will be built in three phases, roughly 880 megawatts in each phase. We'll start to ramp a construction in '23, but subsequent phases coming on, the first phase in '24, the next phase in '25, and completion by 2026. So that's the expectation on construction schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Bain. Councilmember Moss, and then after Councilmember Moss, I'll call Councilmember Tower.
I just want to make a disclosure. Since this brief was to the larger public, I was able to watch it, but my stakeholder, stockholder position and the many resources and the benefits of dividends I receive therefrom, I am prohibited from participating in any issues involving dependent energy. And so I'd just like that to be noted in the record. I will not be commenting on this presentation or any aspects of this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Councilmember Tower, if you'll pause two to three seconds, you can begin with your comments or questions.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Bain, for visiting with us today and for your presentation, which was good news, and thanks to all your doing to make us a stronger community and a more resilient community. I just had a couple of questions. I noticed in the, in the drawings of the turbines, there were two sizes. Could you explain briefly, and I've read recently about newer, larger turbines being successfully tested, I believe, in Europe. Could you talk about the different sizes and how they affect this project?
So for a total of 12 megawatts, the new turbines will be 12 megawatts each. So they're twice as large from a megawatt-producing perspective, and so that's why they're larger. You have longer blades that support creating that additional energy. So that's why you see there's a difference in height. So twice as much energy by the new turbines.
Councilmember Moss, your virtual hand is still raised, so I just want to verify if you had another comment. If not, you just, thank you. And Mr. Tower, did you have any further questions or comments?
I'd like to follow up on that. Mr. Bain, the, these are the same turbines that were, have always been planned. They're bigger than the test turbines, but the larger ones here are the ones that are scheduled for us, if I'm understanding you correctly. And I guess my question is, is it not true that there are even larger turbines now being built, and what's your view of the potential use of the larger turbines?
Thank you, Mr. Bain. You can pause just two, three seconds and begin.
Yeah, so we've selected Siemens Gamesa as our turbine vendor for the larger project, and as you know, the technology continues to iterate, and we will work with them to make sure that we utilize the best available technology when the time comes to install. So as they advance with their technology, we'll make sure that we're hand-in-hand with them.
Thank you. Mr. Tower, do you still have, do you have additional questions or comments?
Question, if I could. The selection of the, of the Fentress substation as the target for the offshore coming in, was that done solely on the basis of proximity, or were there other considerations in choosing the Fentress substation as the landing spot once you got onshore?
Thank you, Mr. Bain.
Location is based on engineering studies, both from our transmission engineers as well as the regional transmission operator PJM. We want to make sure that we utilize, you know, the power generated from these offshore wind turbines to the best of our ability and to support the region and the broader network. And so that location was based on those studies.
Councilman Tower, do you have additional comments? Okay, all right. Mayor, I don't see any virtual hands raised, so I believe we can, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. You know, thank you very much, and I appreciate that, Mr. Bain. You know, if I could just make a comment, I've had the opportunity to take a short boat trip out back in June, and it was a magnificent sight. It was just overwhelming to see what was going on there and the technology, and to talk to the people and the engineers from Dominion Power that really helped put this together. But that being said, this is going to be the catalyst of a great economic development movement right here in Virginia Beach. For so many years, we've been saying we want those type of businesses that are going to keep our children here when they graduate from college. And this is going to be, I really think, a significant launching point going forward in terms of bringing in those wonderful businesses and opportunities for everybody that's going to help not only sustain our economy, but, you know, add to it and help us with the many, many problems, whether it be, you know, stormwater, or, you know, school modernization replacement and employee salaries, and just maintaining the quality of life that we are so blessed to here in Virginia Beach. And I think I'm confident that Dominion Power is going to be a major player in this role going forward. And the other thing, if I can say, that I had the opportunity to meet with the city manager and Mr. Bain and, you know, some other senior members of our staff and their staff, and it was a total collaboration of thought. And if there's one thing I really realized, yeah, took away from that meeting, was that Dominion Power really wants to engage in a meaningful way with all concerned, with people that may live along any potential route, you know, that the power lines are going to go. But once again, you know, I say, look forward with nothing but opportunity about what can come as a result of this. You know, and, you know, Virginia Beach is going to be blessed with the opportunities that we're going to have, and we fully intend to take advantage of it. So, Mr. Bain, I thank you for your presentation today and representing a vital, vital part of not only Virginia Beach, but the Commonwealth of Virginia in what you do and what you give away to charities and everything. You are truly an embedded part of the DNA of the fabric of our society here locally and beyond. Thank you. Okay, Mr. De Haney, at this point, if we can move on to city managers' briefings.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, before we go into the briefings, I wanted to take a timeout to discuss the Vaccinate Virginia Beach efforts. So yesterday, as you know, was the release of the pre-registration app that we put in place on behalf, at the request of the Virginia Health Department. Yeah, I wanted, basically, while, while the first rollout was not without some issues, which I'll talk about in a minute, it was overall a success. You know, more than 3,000 people were vaccinated yesterday at the Virginia Beach Convention Center, and a total of 40,000 individuals pre-registered on the website. Of those pre-registered, approximately 500 were seniors over 90, seniors between 75 and 89, approximately 6,300 were pre-registered, and seniors between 65 and 74, 14,000 were pre-registered. The city's 3-1-1 center is supporting the transition as well. We've asked staff to start answering questions and assisting individuals who don't have access to a computer or an email address, and we're working with the Department of Health to ensure that these individuals are contacted by phone. The call volume that 3-1-1 received yesterday was by far the most that they've ever received. Typical call volume for 3-1-1 is around 400 calls. They saw 4,000 calls yesterday, so that's a 10 times higher call volume for the staff. According to the Virginia Department of Health, Phase 1B priorities are as follows. The first priority for appointments in Phase 1B are seniors 65-plus, public safety, public and private school staff, and childcare facility workers, and all others in Phase B will follow. and private school staff, and childcare facility workers, and all others in Phase B will follow, including those 64 and younger with health risk or certain jobs. So the first priority is seniors 65-plus, public safety, public and private school staff, and childcare facility workers. Pending vaccine supplies, VDH expects that the first tier of Phase B, which is the public safety workers, school, and childcare staff, plus those 65 and older, will be done in approximately one month, but that's pending vaccine supplies. They will then start on the rest of Phase 1B, and they expect that to take another month. The second dose signup, I know a lot of, there's a lot of questions out of the community about when are we going to get our second dose and what the second dose looked like. The Health Department will be following up to provide guidance on how to sign up and also ways to streamline the scheduled process for the second doses. You know, the Virginia Health Department said that there's approximately 127,000 people in Virginia Beach that make up Phase 1B. So you can understand that it may take a few months for us to complete Phase 1B vaccinations with the current, with the current supply situation that we have. Yeah, we're going to be, and we're going to, we're going to need to work with, we're going to have to expand our distribution points. You know, I think right now, if it's the city and doing it all by itself, we definitely won't be able to make a significant impact quickly enough. So there's going to have to be work done to get pharmacies and physicians' offices in place so that we can use other partners to get our constituents vaccinated. And as we all know and all we're hearing every day, supply is the primary barrier to what's going on right now in terms of our rollout for the vaccine. We are prepared at, at the convention center to ramp up to around 300 vaccines an hour if we get the supply. The secondary challenge, obviously, is staffing and resources. Our clinic relies heavily on volunteers through the Medical Reserve Corps and also our EMS staff and EMS volunteers as well. We absolutely cannot provide a clinic anywhere this size without their help. However, this is not sustainable long-term. We need almost 200 people every eight hours for 40 vaccination stations. This includes vaccinators, check-in people, runners, and people to ensure social distancing and other basic protocols are observed. To support this critical service, we are going to start redeploying some city staff from their usual assignments to support the vaccination clinics at the convention center. While we attempt to minimize, while we will definitely attempt to minimize the service disruptions that these temporary assignments may cause, it is possible there may be delays or intermediate closures to some city programs and city services in order to facilitate support of the clinic. As we all know, the city is a learning organization. There's definitely some lessons that we've learned as well, but we're taking all of the lessons that we've gathered yesterday to improve the process going forward. And at this time, before we go into any of the presentations, if council has any comments or questions related to the vaccination effort, I love to hear them and field them and try to answer what I can today and also prepare to get staff to give us, answer additional questions for things I can't answer right now.
Councilmember Moss, if you'll just pause two to three seconds and then begin your comment.
Hey, Patrick, there's a question that I got from a resident deals with our Medical Reserve Corps, whose, some of them, their license have expired, and they were wondering if we were getting any assistance of what kind of waivers we would get from the state so that maybe people that licenses just expired within the last year would still be permitted to get some kind of temporary waiver to administer shots. Can you shed any light on that?
Councilmember Moss, that was a conversation that we had with Dr. Avula a couple years, a couple weeks ago as well. I think he's working with the state on some efforts that they can do to expedite reinstatement of folks, of folks' license so that they can play a part in the vaccination effort. But I'll follow up with the Health Department to make sure as well.
Councilmember Henley, and then after Ms. Henley, I'll call Councilmember Jones. Ms. Henley, if you'll just wait two to three seconds and then begin your questions.
Yes, this is Barbara Henley. I particularly want to address the concerns of the folks in the 65 and older age bracket, and I will reveal, of course, that I am one of those, so I know what the experience is. And I'm hearing quite a lot from folks who are very frustrated. I appreciate that they're being somewhat prioritized within the category 1B, but there are still a lot of problems. It just doesn't fit with what our seniors need. To begin with, just the fact that they have to be registered online, and I appreciate that 3-1-1 is trying to help, but that is very problematic. I'm having a lot of difficulty myself trying to get in today. It just doesn't suit with the technical level that many of us are in at the senior level and then the whole delivery system. To stand in line at the convention center for a couple of hours, particularly in the rain, is just not going to suit seniors. If there's some way we could have a site that was specifically addressing or serving the senior community, that would be what I hope we would, would work toward. It would really need to be a drive-through. I would think Princess Anne Commons in conjunction with Centerra could do a fantastic job. But I think we really need to set up a different system to deal with the seniors, and we need to do it quickly because time is of the essence. This is the age group that if, that's the most vulnerable to having severe cases of the COVID if they do contract it. And with this new, more contagious strain bearing down on us, it's making people very, very nervous. I would hope that the Health Department will be open to looking at how we can particularly address the needs of the seniors quickly and allow us to do a system, another site, and another way of addressing it that will address the needs of this age category. It's critical. I think it's very telling that when the CDC first set up the whole category business, that they made 1A include the people in nursing homes and facilities of that nature. This is the very same group of people, but they just live independently at home. And I hope that they can get the additional, unique situation arranged for them so that they're not competing with the employer classes. To have to do it totally independently, on their own, without an employer helping them set it all up, is just frustrating for people. It's an obstacle that I think they're not going to be able to overcome in many instances. And as I said, these are the people who are going to have the most severe cases if they contract the disease, and they need to be looked out for. I could go on and on and on, but I think I've probably made my point, and I hope we will have some receptance to dealing with this category in a fashion that is better suited to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Henley. Councilmember Jones, if you'll pause two to three seconds, you can begin your comments, and then I'll call on Councilmember Tower.
Thank you. This is Louis Jones. I'd just like to direct my comments to City Manager Dehaney. I was one of the persons who was able to get signed up early, and as a result, I have, I went to the convention center. I was moved right along as I went into the convention center. There was no delay as far as the process was concerned. Everybody was just as polite and helpful as they could be and friendly. And I just wanted to comment on that because I think that's important, that as people do go there for the, for the shot, first inoculation, they're apprehensive, but I think that everybody there, from my observation, was doing an outstanding job and were very efficient, very friendly, and very caring. And I just wanted to comment on that with you. I've been able to rearrange my schedule so that I'll be able to have my second shot. I've already got the appointment, and that was, that's been handled very well. So I just wanted to comment and tell you that my experience with the staff, with all of the volunteers, and the process and procedure was outstanding. So for what it's worth, I want to compliment whoever is running the show down there at the convention center because, from my perspective, they've done, they're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Councilmember Tower, if you'll wait two to three seconds, you can begin your comments or questions.
Thank you, Terry. Patrick, a couple of questions. One, am I correct that we essentially have no, we're on our own in the, right now, in terms of this project that's at the convention center? It's with some cooperation from the State Health Department, but it is basically a city operation? There's no participation or coordination at all with either our local hospitals or our local healthcare providers, private healthcare providers? Is that correct?
Councilmember Tower, those conversations with the Virginia Department of Health and the local health networks and health systems are ongoing. From my conversations with Centerra, Centerra is beginning to start the process of starting to vaccinate their, their patients and their customers as well. So they should start to communicate amongst their health network soon on when they can come into Centerra's hospitals or clinics or doctors or physicians' offices to start to schedule amongst that system to get their, their patients and customers vaccinated there. There's also ongoing conversations of when this is going to start to get to local pharmacies and also local doctors' offices as well, that those conversations are going. They have their own allotment, and they're working that out with the Virginia Department of Health, you know, and we have ours as well that's coming through from the local Health Department. So we're not necessarily alone. It's just they're on different timeframes of when they're going to actually start to reach out to the public, if I can, if that's clear, as clear as I can make it, I think.
Thank you. Councilman Tower, do you still have questions or comments?
Just as a follow-up, it's, it's not entirely clear to me why, why, but I suppose supply is the key. And if they've got their own supply, they're doing their own thing. It does seem to me that coordination and at some point, coordinating with those healthcare, I just get the feeling that in other areas of the state, and certainly other areas of the country, there's a lot more coordination among the healthcare professions and institutions and the local and state government than we're seeing here, and it's distressing. But let me move on to another question. Could you explain the prioritization when calls come in and people are, information's taken? Obviously, you're taking their age when they call in because you're able to report to us how many of the people were vaccinated in the various age groups, but how are you prioritizing appointments? What is, what is the protocol for that, please?
Councilmember Tower, I think a couple of things to make clear. We're not, we don't report out on the age. We're reporting out of the, of the age of those vaccinated. All that information is coming from the Virginia Department of Health. You know, we're talking about the individuals that are, that are preregistering in the portal that the Health Department asked us to create on their behalf. This portal, the information from this portal goes to the Health Department, and then the Health Department puts this information inside the VAM system, and then they prioritize who gets vaccinated as well. So we don't play a role in determining who shows up at the convention center to get vaccinated. We're just creating a vehicle because the VAM system is very user-unfriendly, and the Health Department asked us to create a pre-front, a front door that is more user-friendly for citizens, that they can take the information to get this, to get the citizens' information into the VAM system.
Councilmember Tower, did you have any other comments or questions? If you do, if you could just say all your comments and questions, and then we can respond at the, at one time, please.
Patrick, can you, can you tell us anything about the prioritization that the Health Department is using in scheduling the appointments? I get the picture that we're not participating in that. We're just assisting by providing the front, as you say. But do you have any idea what the actual priority is? And if not, can we find out so that we can tell people?
My understanding from VDH, for the first phase of Phase 1B, the priority are seniors over 65 and public safety, public and private school staff, and childcare facility workers. Then after that priority is achieved, then it'll move to all the other Phase 1B individuals, and that includes people 64 and younger with certain health risk and/or certain jobs. However, there are situations at times when the Health Department, when they're, when certain groups aren't ready, and the Health Department will make a decision for, for the local sites to bring other folks in, in 1B to get vaccinated so that the vaccine doesn't expire. But the priority, as I mentioned before, are seniors 65-plus, public safety, public and private school staff, and then childcare facility workers. And then after that, they should be working on individuals between 16 and 64 with certain health risk and certain other essential jobs after they take care of the first priority of first, of Phase 1B.
Councilmember Henley, if you'll just pause two to three seconds, you can begin with your comment or question. Thank you.
I'm sure everybody just has a different experience, and I am so glad Mr. Jones had a great one, but I still haven't been able to get into the VAMs system. I tried again today with a lot of help from some good city staff, and we still haven't made it. So I think we have to realize that we don't have a perfect system yet, and we need to do a lot of work because it's, it's critical that we get this right and get it done well. But I'm sure that all of those volunteers at the convention center are wonderful. I join in saying how much I appreciate all that they're doing, but we really have to work on particularly this registration system because if you can't get into the system, you don't get anything. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I don't see anybody else with their virtual hand raised, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Now, if I could just make a couple of comments, and I really appreciate Louis Jones, you know, speaking favorably. Yesterday, I did drop by the convention center myself to observe because of the concern that I've heard from a number of people about having, people having, waiting outside in the rain. And, but when I did get there, boy, there were people lined up in and, you know, serpentine'd around the first floor and, but, you know, everything appeared orderly and, you know, did well. But I agree with Mrs. Henley. We have to improve things, mostly in terms of access and things of that nature. But let me just say that people from CERT and all the other volunteers were there. And I did speak to the gentleman who was running the operation, and from what I understand, he's going to try to retrofit for, I think, the next go-around to move some rooms around for, you know, distribution and then also the waiting room so we can get more people indoors. But I think Mrs. Henley is spot-on when we say we need other locations eventually. I'm going to be speaking to some people in Richmond right after this meeting, you know, about, you know, supply and a few other things and, you know, to see what we can do. But yes, we just started, and I'm in, I was in touch with Ed Brazel. I understand that Vice Mayor Wood has also been... with Ed Brazel. I, I understand that Vice Mayor Wood has also been in touch with Mr. Brazel and he's been doing a tremendous job, you know, considering the logistics challenges that we have. And, uh, you know, but once again, it's a learning experience as we go forward and, you know, eventually we will hopefully get it right. Um, and the other thing is, Mr. Tower, I've been talking to Centerra usually at least three times a week for the last month. And I am sure that eventually, once things start getting into a little bit better flow, you know, in terms of, um, you know, supply, uh, uh, supply chain demands and other things, you know, we're going to get it together. You know, we have a very, very good partner with Centerra. It's just a matter of time. We just were able to allow to progress to 1B yesterday. And I can tell you, Mr. DeHany and his staff are working diligently to, to really get this going in the right direction. But Mr. DeHany, thank you for, you know, encouraging report. And, uh, but once again, I think, uh, you know, we're going to get it done. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be from the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation. They'll provide the council with an update on its work to provide emergency housing assistance to individuals during the pandemic.
If you'll just pause two to three seconds, you can begin with the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is Andy Friedman from the Housing Department, um, here to give you an update on previous presentations we did in 2020 about the subject of emergency housing assistance and how we're assisting or helping to ensure that our citizens are assisted with housing crises that have occurred as a result of the pandemic. So let's go to the next slide. Um, so our department doesn't necessarily deliver all the services that our citizens need. That's not our role, but we try to fund and facilitate and coordinate the work of others to make sure that those needs are met. And we work closely with a wide variety of groups in our planning and our execution, including your appointed housing advisory board, the homeless continuum of care, and the Beach Community Partnership, which is a coalition of everyone interested in addressing homelessness. And we also fund services and housing developments through contracts and partnership. Our department operates the federal housing choice voucher program, code enforcement, as you know, our owner occupied rehab program. We manage the housing resource center. We provide housing crisis and stabilization services, including homeless prevention, and we do outreach assessment and referral for the homeless services system. Next slide, please. So I want to just point out that we've had a complex flow of funding, of various ways that funding has come to the community to be available to assist people. There are six different flows of funds. Funding has come directly to you, the city council, and you've allocated funds for housing assistance that we have utilized. Funding has gone to the Department of Housing, to our department for housing assistance. And we've had three different flows of funding from the state passing through federal assistance, both for sheltering at motels, for our partners in the nonprofit world to provide housing and homeless assistance. And most recently, which is just going to start, and I'll talk about that in a minute, the federal emergency rental assistance program. Next slide, please. So in total, funding that has flowed directly to our department that we've been able to allocate, not necessarily expense so far, but allocate for housing assistance is $7.8 million. It doesn't include funds flowing directly to nonprofit organizations. That amount is at least another $1.7 million. And then it doesn't include the very large amount that the state has just received. That I'll talk about in a minute. Next slide, please. So three things the state has done, and with the state's help, I want to point out that since May, there has been rental housing assistance for people and there have been hotel shelter assistance for people since March. Actually, we've had hotel shelter assistance in place. State has provided over $500,000 specifically to support non-congregate shelter at motels. Since July, they've had a rental and mortgage relief program. And starting probably in February, they will administer a huge allocation of $568 million that will be statewide available, availability for rental assistance, including residents of Virginia Beach. So since March, we've had shelter, non-congregate shelter, and since May, we've had rental assistance. Next slide. So it's been our continuous quest to try to understand the community needs that have occurred as a result of the pandemic. We use multiple ways. We did a survey back at the very beginning. We have looked at who's calling to apply for programs. We've had calls with service providers as well as our realtors, apartment managers, and landlords, and been looking at local and national data. And I'd have to say, things continue to evolve. And then the regulatory environment continues to evolve within, just recently, the new federal eviction moratorium. And coming soon, new state laws that affect the relationship between housing, between tenants and landlords. So there are three types of responses that are needed for the different types of experience people have had, and we'll address each of those sequentially. We can just go on to the next slide. The first one is people experiencing homelessness. And right at the beginning in the lockdown, we knew that people being on the street were in danger of becoming infected as well as a potential danger to the community and that densely occupied shelters with no opportunity for social distancing were really not a great idea. Many people experiencing homelessness have underlying medical conditions. And so because of these threats, we were able to, and because of the federal and state funding, we were able to take immediate action. On the next slide. So back on March, by March 20th, we had instituted motel sheltering for people in the most vulnerable on the street. And we were able to reduce the density of the housing resource center by 50%. Um, our, to date, we've served 296 households with some period of motel sheltering. There are currently 123 households served. Um, but we haven't stopped there. We put in place an ongoing plan to move people out of hotels and into permanent housing, hopefully not back to the streets. Out of those 296, 173 households that's left have exited the program. And 60%, or about, about 100 have exited to a permanent or temporary housing destination. So that's a really important outcome that we've continued to work on and continuing today. We also have, since we opened the housing resource center even before a homeless prevention program with funds from you, the city council, and from our foundation, BB Home Now and other sources. And one indicator of community need is clearly the demand for that program. We saw a 360% increase year over year from 2020 to, from 2019 to 2020. 1,800 requests as opposed to 400 in the prior, same period prior year. Um, we were successfully able to help 60% of those presenting, um, to prevent their homelessness, meaning they did not end up on the street or losing their housing, which is another indicator of success preventing things from happening due to the effects of the pandemic. So renters are another category of people obviously affected by the pandemic to the job and due to job and income losses. Um, this whole set of impacts on renters has been affected by the state and federal eviction moratoria, which continue today. Renters have savings. Landlords have exhibited, uh, practiced forbearance and instituted payment plans. And then state laws have changed as well, as well as the multiple assistance programs that have been put in place, both locally and statewide. So, um, as I said, we've had emergency assistance for renters. We instituted our own program back in April called the eviction prevention, prevention assistance, assisted about 125 households, um, with rental assistance, helped them stay in or avoid losing their housing. Phase two was the state program that began at the end of June, operated by Four Kids, our partner. And phase three is right now is really, they're calling it the same title, state rental and mortgage relief program. It continues as it was, but it is now operated at a central call center operated by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, along with Virginia Housing. Um, there is both a landlord and a tenant portal. Landlords with tenants of multiple cities can make one application and receive assistance in a variety of places. And they have, I understand that they're ramping up to have about a total of over 200 employees working on this program. They have, as I mentioned, over $500 million in federal assistance from the most recent federal appropriations act. And, um, you received, uh, Manager DeHany's letter that they will be administering assistance here in Virginia Beach. So that means landlords and tenants here will apply through this, one of the two state portals for assistance. So the effects of the pandemic on homeowners with mortgages, we have not been able to, we have not seen a lot of negative effects to date. Um, we know that there have been forbearance requirements for federally backed and assisted mortgages and foreclosure postponements. But we did institute our own local program. Um, we can actually go on to the next slide called the Short Term Mortgage Assistance Program. Um, we actually expanded eligibility to allow assistance to federally backed mortgage holders. Um, and we are assisting people with payments that are delinquent on or after April 1st. Um, we have targeting on that, but we're certainly open to re-looking at that targeting as my discussion with Mr. Moss earlier. Um, but to date, we've only had three eligible applicants and I'm going to be getting the information on those who might have been declined for, um, income reasons, but mostly they have, we, I will have to report back on you and why the, why the non-eligible applicants were not able to be assisted. But we haven't seen a strong demand for this assistance yet. Hopefully we won't. Um, but that program is in place and available today. So we have done a lot to get the word out. Um, we use news releases, social media channels. We certainly work closely with the communications department. Um, the city and department newsletters, our websites, and with our partners and stakeholders. And we do have and definitely intend to participate in an outreach program that the state is putting a request for proposals out to do specifically targeted outreach to make sure all of the communities of renters that need this assistance that's now available will have access to it. So that's a priority for us at this point. We also want to continue and are continuing to address street homelessness and panhandling. Based on the resort initiative, we do have, we have enhanced outreach in the resort area even ahead of hiring the additional staff that have been budgeted for. We are, as we had talked to Ms. Wooton about previously, going to follow through with a planned survey of businesses about how panhandling is affecting them and then take some actions with education and coordination to see how we can help with that. Basically, our ideas are how to, how to give other than to give to panhandlers and making sure everyone knows how to get help. So how to give help, how to get help to discourage panhandling and make sure people have access to the resources that are available. We do have services continuing at the housing resource center. We have reopened day services. We have limited capacity to make sure we continue to maintain social distancing, but we are open four days a week for that service. Our health center, which is located there, is also open for appointments other than not for vaccinations, but for basic, uh, basic preventive healthcare. And we also continue to assist people with our housing prevention and assessment services. And those are accessed, as they always have been, through the regional crisis hotline operated by Four Kids. So here's how people should access the services are available. Tenants should call the 211 system in Virginia or Virginia. Visit the DHCD website, which is listed there. Landlords can also do that through the landlord portal. People can call us or go online to access our short form, more short-term mortgage assistance programs. And there is homelessness prevention, housing and shelter available through us by calling the regional housing crisis hotline. So, um, part of our presentation today has been prepared for and the programs are operated by Karen Perchillo, who operates the mortgage program, and Ruth Hill and Pam Shine, who run our homeless services, a housing resource center and homeless services system. And any of us would be happy to answer your questions at this time. Thank you.
Mayor, just see, I'm seeing some hands raised. I have Councilmember Henley, Councilmember Moss, and then Councilmember Wooton, and I'll call them in that order. Councilmember Henley, if you'll just pause two to three seconds, uh, and you begin your comments or questions.
This is Barbara Henley. Thank you very much, Andy. Y'all do a, a great job. And I'm so glad to hear that we are able to reopen some of the services at the homeless center and, and the work that you are doing. But it sort of made me concerned. I know that in the past, we have had the winter homeless shelter program that we have operated in conjunction with the churches in the area, but I'm assuming that's not able to operate because of pandemic. Uh, thankfully, we haven't had extremely cold nights, but it is pretty chilly to be out there. So what is happening this winter? Is there anything? Or just how are, are people able to, to deal with the cold weather? I think supposed to get pretty ugly Thursday night. What are folks going to do that, who are outside?
Mr. Friedman, if you'll wait two to three seconds, you can begin with your comment.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Henley, we are very aware of that. And we actually had all the way up until late November planned to try to do a safe version of congregate winter shelter, but came to the conclusion that it wasn't feasible, as you said. So what we've done is expanded our motel sheltering program this winter. Um, and we have a nonprofit provider who has done intake to admit additional people all through the last few weeks. So that's why we actually have 125 households sheltered as of, um, approximately today. And that's the way that we are hoping to have addressed the need for preventing people from being out in this weather. I would ask Terry, if Ruth Hill is on, if she would like to add to that question, the answer to that question.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Ms. Hill, would you, would you like to have, would you like to give any comments?
Thank you so much, Andy and Ms. Henley for your question. Um, yes, to just reiterate what Andy said, we have actually expanded our, um, our non-congregate sheltering program. And as of today, I just heard from Pam Shine on the program that we actually have over 180 people that are sheltered. And what happens is we have a very robust outreach team that engages persons that are experiencing homelessness, unsheltered on the street, and they are out and about in the community every day. And so they are reaching out and engaging with persons that they're seeing. And the assessment actually goes through And the assessment actually goes through our coordinated assessment triage system. And so the most vulnerable people are actually put in the hotels first. But we are ensuring that we're out and looking for folk that might be still unsheltered and ensuring that they have the resources they need. One of the things I will say is a, a shelter bed may be in the HRC. It doesn't necessarily have to be a hotel room. We don't advertise it as hotel rooms. We actually tell people that we have an enhanced sheltering program. So if there's a bed that becomes available at the HRC, they can access that first. And that's how we, that's how we are communicating it to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Councilmember Henley, do you have any other questions or comments?
I would just like to say thank you to all the folks over there. It sounds like you've really got things covered as well as you can. And, and we all appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henley. Councilmember Moss, if you'll pause just two to three seconds, you can begin your comments or questions.
Mr. Mayor and colleagues, I sat down over the phone earlier today and went through the briefs and posed my questions in order to maximize council discussion time later. But I would like Mr. Friedman, when the time comes, to share both my questions and my answers with all of us. And that's all I have to offer at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Councilmember Wooton, if you'll pause just two to three seconds, you can begin with your questions or comments. Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon. Just would like to say thank you to Mr. Friedman for the presentation, as well as the staff for the excellent job that you do to take care of our most vulnerable population in Virginia Beach. I remember working together before the pandemic to work on a campaign that would address homelessness and engaging the community, business owners, so that we could educate the public on how to give help and then how to help people in, in the, who find themselves in a circumstance of being homeless. And I remember us talking and working together before the pandemic. And then things seemed to have come to a halt after that on my end, you know, due to that. But you never stopped working, you kept moving forward. And I'm just pleased to see all of the progress that you and your staff has made, extending your program, your services to reach out and help those, you know, who are homeless. I just can't tell you enough how much I appreciate that. And I look forward to continue to work with you to ensure that that campaign moves forward, where we will be engaging the community and business owners to ensure that those who are homeless receive the help that they need. And because I believe that it makes Virginia Beach a more welcoming place to the community, to, to residents, to everyone who comes to visit Virginia Beach. So again, thank you, Mr. Friedman. Thank you, Ms. Hill, Ms. Shine, your outreach team, everyone who participates in making this happen. Greatly appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wooton. Councilmember Moss, your hand is raised, so I'm not sure if you have a question. If you do, go ahead and begin your comments. That seems to be all the hands that are right, or everybody's done. If you, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, Mr. Freeman, Ms. Hill, I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the city. The manager and I were just commenting on what a laudable effort the city of Virginia Beach does, working with the homeless. There's no simple solution to this, but be sure that our effort is genuine and will always be there. But thank you. Okay, Mr. Duhany, if we can move forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation is going to be provided by the Department of Economic Development. They're going to brief you on how the funds appropriated by City Council to the Development Authority for small business support assisted more than 600 businesses navigate the pandemic. This report does not include the council-approved small business grants that went through the United Way and their partner Lisk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Adams. If you'll go ahead and pause two to three seconds, you begin your presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, and good afternoon, Mr. Duhany and Mr. Stiles. It's a, it's always an honor to be with you all. And thank you for the opportunity to, to provide an update on our small business assistant efforts during the pandemic. I'll begin by saying that basically going off of what, what Mr. Duhany mentioned earlier on another item, this has very much been a series of lessons learned for us and, and what we would say, an environment where we have refined our process a number of times. If we can go to the next slide. We began with EDIP Part E. Then we added a, all in an effort to be more efficient. We refined that project or that process by adding a recapture agreement to it. We then came with the CARES Act and then following that, which is not included in the information we have today as, as we don't have the specific, specific information from the community provider. But now, as you all know, through Lisk and VBRelief.org. But what the great news is that $6.1 million worth of funds have been dispersed to small businesses in our community. That's 302 EDIP Part E grants, 347 CARES Act reimbursement grants, six totaling 649 grants with an average value of $9,000. And so some of the things that we've learned here, these, we learned very quickly that we were dealing with smaller businesses than we have ever seen before that my office had worked with. And we quickly realized that there was a need to be nimble. And so the reason that I wanted to give you this in the, in the, in the phases that I mentioned a moment ago is because we, one of the things that, that we learned is that, and this is my fault because I, I did the first cut of the, of the, of the policy that you all ultimately voted on. You know, what, what we draw up in the lab doesn't always work as well as, as we want it to in the real world. And so what you'll see here is each phase, through each phase, we got a little better at getting this money out the door. But, but all of that said, the response from the business community here has been overwhelmingly positive. I will tell you, your, I want to express not just on behalf of my department, but on behalf of the businesses, the, the vast majority of the business that we, that we have spoken to, their overwhelming gratitude to you for what is unprecedented support for small, for the smallest businesses in our community. And really what has been an integral part of ensuring that our business community is able to survive this pandemic. I've looked at the, at the programs that many of my peers have put out. And what I would tell you, I'm confident that, that our programs here and that your action here established us as not just a leader in the region and in Commonwealth, but as a leader in the mid-Atlantic. And so thank you for continuing to be strong supporters of our local business community. If we can move to the next slide, I'll start providing some demographics. This slide is one of the easiest ways I found to clearly illustrate that, that this money was spread across the city. So you can see here, certainly, certainly we understand that hospitality was most impacted. And in fact, as we dive into the demographics of the, of the EDIP Part E grant, we see that just over 70% of, of these funds were distributed to businesses that were in retail hospitality and that would include retail and hospitality, and that would include restaurants. No surprise, those businesses have been heavily impacted by, by, by the pandemic. And so you see, if you consider 23451, the ocean front, you'll see that there, that there, that there, of course, a number of restaurants are highest, are highest specific density of restaurants in the city. So not surprising that we see a lot of, a lot of use there of the EDIP Part E. But also, it's important to note, you can see this, these programs were utilized across the city. If we can go to the next slide. Here's a similar breakdown by, by CARES Act distribution. And so you can see again, heavy, heavy use in 23451, but, but also again, spread across the city. What's, again, as we look where we don't have, I will admit, by the time we got to the CARES Act distribution, our focus, we were focusing heavily on getting the money out the door because we were, the, the CARES Act grants came late in the summer, moving into fall. It was, we had all thought that the pandemic would long be over by then. But as we saw, as, and as we are still dealing with it, it has persisted. So by the time we got to the CARES Act data, we were focusing specifically on reimbursements of expenditures that businesses had already put, had already outlaid. And we were doing everything we could to just get this money out the door expeditiously. But as I look across our industry sectors and the data that we have for the EDIP Part E, it's important to note that we hit all of our industrial sectors citywide. Everything in EDIP Part E, early in, early on, we, we saw manufacturing use. Four of our manufacturers participated, 12 of our general construction providers, 40 of our professional office providers. We saw a nice distribution of use across all of our industries. Recognizing that 70% of our users were in retail, actually more, just over 70% of our users were in retail and hospitality. Anecdotally, we saw those same numbers come across to the CARE, to the CARES Act program as well. If we can move to the next slide. I want to talk just a minute about what we're doing next. Before I dive into this though, again, in addition to the things that I offered, that I, that I offered to you on behalf of our community, I would like to recognize our city auditor, Lyndon Ramirez and his team. As you all know, Lyndon does, Lyndon provides a calendar of what he will be doing of his, his audit activities for you, for each of the coming, for each coming year. Lyndon was a real asset to me and to my team in that they went above and beyond to help us ensure that we were meeting the, the intent of your policy as adopted and then affirmed in the Development Authority's procedures. And so I can't say enough about, about how helpful Lyndon and his team were. And then also quickly, Jeff Smith, who was project manager on our team, assisted by Vicky Kelly, Sean Murphy, Olivia Aubrey and Letitia Langaster, who all, I mean, I would tell you, worked Memorial Day, worked the Fourth of July. Did, I will tell you, I was very impressed, I was very pleased to see the engagement, particularly from, from our project manager here, Jeff Smith, who was, who, who did yeoman's work to ensure that we got this money out the door. Also, I want to mention Charlie Baumann, Devin Cowley and Cole Trower, who worked specifically on one program. We can't stop here. Coming out of this, we're preparing to launch. Many of you have heard about our Small Business and Assistance Recovery Center here in, here in Town Center. Where we ultimately, we call this facility the Hive. And we want this to, to not just be an assistance and recovery center, but recognizing that we're going to need to grow and that, that the healing from this, from this pandemic is going to take us a while. So the Hive, we hope will be, will become the place where you go in Virginia Beach to start a business. In addition, it's also the place where we want you to go if, if you have been, if you are unemployed or underemployed as a result of this pandemic. We want you to come and see us in the Hive so that we can pair you with some of our regional, some of our regional partners. But this, this facility is to basically exemplify my office's new commitment to small business. This is a 10,000 square foot facility. It's on street level. It's here close to my office where we can, where we can basically operate that facility as an extension of my office. Our initial partners in this facility are, are Tidewater Community, Tidewater Community College, Virginia Wesleyan University and the Regional Workforce Council. I want to take a moment to stop here and thank you all. You will remember, leading into the holidays, you all helped us by basically including the Workforce Council in, in the first large appropriation that we did to the not-for-profit, not-for-profit community with CARES Act funds. And also you'll remember a large contribution that we made to Tidewater Community College, which is actually, which was actually to buy equipment to stand up labs for specifically for workforce training. I'm following that, Virginia Wesleyan, who, and I should say, why Virginia Wesleyan. Important to note, Tidewater Community College and Virginia Wesleyan University currently allow co-enrollment and co-offer programs specifically for workforce and then, and then, and then ultimately for, for four-year degree users. This is an important part of our workforce. We, we believe that Tidewater Community College is uniquely prepared to deliver skills-based education that would support manufacturing uses. Virginia Wesleyan, we believe will move, will be a great partner for us in offering what would be paraprofessional and office-specific uses. You will see that there's, that there's an item coming to you next week for the other half of our, of the workforce plan here. To give you an update on where we are with the facility, our ID, our IT equipment, the furniture and our signage are all ordered. Our grand opening will, we, where we have had a bit of a soft opening, where some education, workforce education program has already begun on just sort of a, helping us figure out what we're dealing with in the space and how to best program it. Our grand opening will immediately follow completion of the build-out of the space, which we hope is in the coming weeks. We are looking to engage a broad group of regional partners beyond specifically the three that we have mentioned here. However, I don't know that I could emphasize enough how important workforce training will be for us coming out of this pandemic as we grow out of it. We'll also be offering a number of new technol, that we will have new technology offerings for job seekers and startups. And there's, there's a great platform that, that a local programmer, Bevan Moore, has already released called Elevate You that, that, that he is offering to people basically at no use of, at no charge right now. We're very excited about where we're going next. We're, we are deeply appreciative of your continued support of our business community coming out of the pandemic. And if we can go to the next slide, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions. And I think that, that may, that, that's actually my last slide. So I'm happy to take any questions.
May I have Councilmember Rouse? And then I'll call on Councilmember Moss and Councilmember Wooton. Councilmember Mo, sorry, Rouse, if you'll just pause two to three seconds, you can begin.
Hi, yeah, thank you so much, Terry. Thank you, Taylor, for that great presentation here. As liaison to the Minority Business Council, I know our, our business here in Virginia Beach has taken, taken a hard hit across the board here. But I know our minority businesses have also have been hit the hardest. So out of all of those grants, how many of those, those grants have been awarded to small women and minority-owned and veteran, disabled-owned businesses as well? So I would like to know that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. If you'll pause two to three seconds, you can go ahead.
What we can tell you definitively is that all, because of the parameters that City Council established, we can tell you that all of this money went to, to businesses that would qualify as SWAM in the Commonwealth. What I do not have at this point is we are working through specifically the, our full after-action reporting. And important to know, the, the last group of checks related to CARES Act were, were written on basically December 31st to ensure that we were compliant with the act. If, if you would allow me to, I'm happy to come back to council with more definitive reporting on specifically the, what would be the, the demographic makeup of the businesses. But I do not have that at this time and I apologize for that.
Mr. Rouse, if you would wait two to three seconds, you go ahead and make your comment.
Thank you, Taylor. I'll be looking forward to that information. My follow-up question would be primarily pertaining to the Hive. And maybe the city manager also can chime in on this also. Out of the CARES Act funding, what, is there a possible way or is there a way to appropriate funding from the CARES Act to the Hive to make sure we, we can sustain, grow, nurture businesses that have been really, really affected by this pandemic going forward?
Mr. Adams, if you'll pause two to three seconds and then you can begin.
So Councilmember, the, the, the short answer is we have already utilized CARES Act funding for the majority of, of the expenditures as we have been focused specifically on providing workforce support for members of our community that were furloughed as a result of the pandemic. as a result of the pandemic. Um, and so, um, it would certainly be our intent to continue to, to request, so request that type of support, so long as it was, uh, of course, consistent with your will and, uh, appropriate within the, uh, the, the, the guidance that's coming from the Treasury Department on future use of CARES Act funds.
Thank you. Councilmember Moss, and then Councilmember Wooton. Councilmember Moss, if you'll wait just two to three seconds before you begin. Thank you.
Well, first, Mr. Adams, great job. You already touched on one of my questions, which is trying to get a breakdown. We know restaurants have been the hardest hit of all the businesses across the country as well as in Virginia Beach, so I'll be interested in that. And also as the, uh, I guess I'll call it the organic or base regulations from Treasury and other places come out, I would like to be provided those. I always like to read those for myself and all my own conclusions. I would appreciate, make sure, as they become available, they just be included in my packet. And thank you for a great job. I think in the region, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues, I think we have been the, uh, bright star of, of using our CARE Act money, whether to solve our budget problems, to solve the budget problems of our businesses. And hats off to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Councilmember Wooton, if you'll pause two to three seconds, you can begin your comments.
Yes, I too would like to thank, uh, Mr. Adams and his team for all their hard work to get out the resources to, uh, that are much needed to our small businesses, uh, during this time and our local businesses who are suffering from the pandemic. I just want to make sure, uh, that I provide a clarity with regard to the Hive office, to those who are watching. The Hive office is considered the SWAM, uh, office, this, the dedicated office, uh, that was required, uh, and that was recommended in the disparity study, uh, recommendations that the city was supposed to ensure that there was a separate office to support SWAM, small women, uh, minorities, uh, services-enabled veterans, uh, their businesses. And so I just wanted to make sure that the public knows that this is that dedicated office to support SWAM businesses, though it's called the Hive. It is, uh, that SWAM office that you as citizens fought for, requested, you marched for, and you, uh, continue to, uh, request from the City of Virginia Beach, uh, to ensure that, uh, the needs of SWAM business owners were taken care of. And so I just wanted to make sure the public is aware, um, that the Hive is actually that specific office that was set aside in those recommendations. And I'm glad to see that it is going forward and that we do have the dedicated staff to support SWAM businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moss, did you have any other comments? Wait, okay, thank you. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Adams, I just wanted to really thank you and, uh, your marvelous staff and a lot of other folks that are bringing this all together. You know, as we progress to making Virginia Beach the city of yes, the city of inclusion, the city of diversity, um, having worked with myself, um, prior to my becoming mayor, uh, with the Minority Business Council for years, do we have a ways to go? Yeah, but I'll tell you what, we have made some significant and steady process going forward with the help of, uh, so many people. And, uh, once again, if we're going to turn the corner and, you know, become economically stable and grow our economy, this is a big step. And I just, just think that we're going to show everyone that we are open for business for everyone. We're going to give everybody a fair, uh, shot at doing business with our great city. And I just think, uh, that what, um, Mr. Adams just articulated right now is sound evidence that we are moving positively in that direction. Thank you very much. Mr. Dehaney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the last, um, city manager briefing is the pending planning items. The planning department will brief the council on, on the planning items that are scheduled to appear at your February 16th council meeting.
Mr. Tahan, if you would pause two to three seconds, you can begin your presentation. Thank you. We, I don't know if you can hear us. We can't hear you. If you'll pause two to three seconds, and then you can begin your presentation.
Thank you. I'm just, thank you. Sorry about that. I was double muted. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, members of City Council. Uh, this is the glimpse presentation for the February 16th City Council meeting. These are all regular planning items. Uh, no short termals are on this agenda. Hope you can go to the next slide. Again, there are 16 items, uh, on this agenda. Next slide, please. And next slide. Our first three items that are on this, uh, presentation are all subdivision variances. This first one is by Woodhouse Family LP at 1805 Estates Court in the Lynn Haven District. Uh, staff recommends approval and the planning commission recommends approval, uh, with a 10 to 0 vote. Uh, this is the existing, uh, the final lot in the Estates of Lynn Haven, uh, subdivision that had the original historic home on it. Uh, after a few years, the family has decided, uh, after they had to demolish the historic home that was on the property, um, they've decided to move forward with a subdivision, uh, to create three lots on this property. Uh, this subdivision did go to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Board, and with that variance that was granted by the CBPA Board, they are required to have all their development, uh, be outside of the 100-foot resource protection area buffer. The subdivision variance is for, uh, is, uh, necessary due to the lot width that's proposed for each of these three lots. The three lots do meet the minimum lot size requirements for the R40 district, but as you can see, they, uh, all share a driveway, uh, that would meet up at Estates Court. Uh, at this time, there are no sub, there are no plans, uh, associated with the proposed subdivision, and, uh, they are, there is a condition in there that requires, um, staff to review the elevations to be consistent with what is, uh, in the existing neighborhood. The next item is, uh, by Boaz Benjamin Brothers at 1944 Pleasant Ridge Road in the Princess Anne District. Staff recommends approval and the planning commission also recommends approval. Go to the next slide. Thank you. Uh, this is a request of subdivision variance. One of the lots was created legally by plat, uh, by deed, um, early in the 19, uh, late in the 1950s. However, two of the lots that were created, were created after the requirement of when there was a need to subdivide by plat. Because of that, a subdivision variance is required in order to legally identify the lots and to, uh, combine the lots together. The applicant's proposing to put these lots together to, uh, to use as one property. Uh, the lots do not meet the minimum lot width requirement, but as you can see, that's how they were previously subdivided. Uh, they, they are, uh, improving that situation by making the lot width, uh, to 124 and a half feet rather than the 75, 12, and 37 and a half feet as they were previously, um, created by deed. Next slide, please. Our third item on this agenda is by Thomas A. Brown at 2888 Indian River Road in the Princess Anne District. Uh, again, another subdivision variance that staff recommends approval and the planning commission also recommend approval. Next slide. There are two existing lots on this property that can be built at this time. The applicant is proposing to, uh, more evenly distribute the lots, uh, to have about one acre apiece. Uh, this was on the consent agenda. As you can tell, there is no direct frontage on the, on the road, on Pleasant Ridge Road. Um, oh, I'm sorry, on, uh, Indian River Road. So, uh, the applicant is proposing to more evenly distribute the lots. Uh, this was on the consent agenda, but the planning commission, uh, in, uh, reacting to some of the concerns from the neighbors, added an additional condition, which is shown here in the, uh, second graphic at the bottom, that maintains a 20-foot tree buffer, uh, between this proposed subdivision and the existing homes, uh, that are behind it. Next slide, please. Thank you. Our next item is by Michael and Felicia Giuliano at, uh, 804 Vanderbilt Drive. Uh, it is a street closure to close a portion of the alley, and this is in the Beach District. Staff recommends approval and the planning commission also recommends approval. This is similar to the other street closures that have occurred in Croatan, where the, the portion of the alley that is between the lots, um, is being requested to be closed. There, it will be a, uh, public drainage man that will be retained over that portion of the closed right-of-way. Next, thank you. Our next item is, uh, Five Points LLC at 2005 Lynn Haven Parkway in the Rose Hall District. It's a modification of proffers. Staff recommends approval and the planning commission on a 10 to 0 vote also recommend approval. Uh, the proposal is to allow for a, uh, the existing, uh, retail store there to, uh, provide a drive-through facility. Uh, the modification or the existing proffers require a 20-foot landscape buffer. As you can see, it's at that very corner near, uh, Princess Anne and Lynn Haven Parkway, where the proposed drive-through lane will, uh, encroach slightly into that area. Uh, because of that, the modification of the proffers is required to allow that slight, uh, encroachment into the existing landscape buffer. This proposed drive-through lane does line up with the, uh, adjacent drive-through lanes of the three other, uh, drive-through facilities that do exist on the property already. And this will be, uh, allow the existing eating and drinking establishment to, uh, provide, uh, drive-through service, um, at their existing location. Uh, I, I do see, uh, Mr. Moss has a question.
Moss, if you'll pause just two to three seconds, you can ask your question.
I'll just wait to the end of the presentation so that he can continue. Thank you.
Mr. Moss. Mr. Tahan, go ahead and finish your, uh, presentation.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is, uh, St. John the Apostle Catholic Church and School at 1968 Sandbridge Road in the Princess Anne District. It is a modification of conditions to an existing conditional use permit, uh, for religious use in a private school. Staff and planning commission both, uh, recommend approval. This is the location of the existing, uh, church as well as a existing school. There's a proposal to expand, uh, the school by utilizing offices, but not expand the number of students, and also add a social hall, uh, and a proposed chapel, and increase the parking to meet the, uh, to help meet the congregation's needs at the church. Uh, preliminary stormwater, uh, management analysis was provided, and based on what was provided, it has the potential to comply with the requirements, uh, of, uh, the stormwater management, um, ordinance. The proposal, uh, will be required to go through the site plan review process, and during that process, there'll be a determination on whether or not a right or left-hand turn lanes, uh, will be required along Sandbridge Road, uh, through that more detailed review process. Next item is, uh, by Will, Wilson R. Balance Jr. at 621 Damneck Road in the Princess Anne District. This is a conditional rezoning from AG2 Agricultural District to Conditional RFIB Residential District. Uh, staff recommends approval and the planning commission also recommends approval. Uh, so the request is to create, uh, two residential lots from the existing, uh, lot that's there. There's an existing home that's proposed to be demolished, and the elevations you see in the middle of the presentation, uh, they are two stories. The JRP did review the proposal, and it is, uh, in compliance with 1804 of the zoning ordinance, uh, in regards to the development that is compatible and also is consistent with the existing densities that are out in that, uh, area, and based on what location this is in, in the ACUS zone. Uh, as you can tell by the depth of the lot, the lots will meet, uh, will be consistent with the, will meet or exceed the consistent lot area requirements, but do meet the existing lot widths of the adjacent neighborhood, neighbors, uh, neighborhoods, uh, to the west. Next item is on, is by Old Damneck LLC at 18, or 1081, 1087, 1089 Old Damneck Road, as well as, uh, 1089 Old Damneck Road and adjacent parcel west of that. It's in the Princess Anne District. Uh, this is a conditional rezoning from AG2 to Conditional B2 and a conditional use permit for a mini warehouse. Staff and planning commission recommend approval. Uh, the rezoning request, uh, will allow for, uh, this, uh, mini storage, uh, unit to, uh, I'm sorry, the conditional rezoning and the conditional use permit will allow for this mini storage, uh, facility to be, uh, constructed. Uh, they will have access and shared from the Damneck Crossing Shopping Center, and there will be no access, uh, from Old Damneck Road, which has potential conflicts with any existing residential, uh, properties. Uh, this is located in one of the highest noise zones in the ACUS, and residential uses are not compatible. Uh, this mini warehouse use is a compatible use, uh, in this location. And again, they also submitted their preliminary stormwater management analysis and have the ability to comply with stormwater management regulations. On the top left corner, you, you see, you saw the proffered, uh, elevations, uh, that were provided as well. And, uh, again, staff and planning commission do recommend approval. Our next item is by William T. and Carolyn Dale Weems at 1420 Claudia Drive in the Bayside District. Uh, staff recommends approval and planning commission voted eight to two to recommend approval of this outdoor recreation facility. Uh, the conditional use permit is, uh, for an outdoor recreational facility, uh, for a, um, essentially an area where ground balls, uh, can be, um, fielded by, uh, students or, or those that are practicing there. And there was no batting cage. It was proposed at the time during the planning commission hearing. Uh, planning commission, uh, during the hearing, did remove the condition that was recommended by staff that prohibited lighting, uh, as well as allowed for the expansion of the timeline from dusk, which was a recommended condition by staff, to 9:00 PM, which aligned with what was approved for other outdoor recreation facilities that were more recently approved in the same general area, uh, that council has already approved. Um, they also added a condition that would limit parking, uh, not on, uh, Claudia Drive, which is that public right-of-way, which is, uh, unimproved, which goes back to the property, but requires them to have, uh, all their, um, those that come to utilize the facility to park on the property in their driveway. There were four speakers in support of the application, and then there were also three speakers in opposition, uh, concerned with noise and traffic. This is an after-the-fact request for the conditional use permit. There was a, uh, there was operations of this outdoor recreation facility prior, which, uh, made the, had the applicant come in to request approval of the conditional use permit. Next item is by Asia Mitchell at 4654 Hagen Road in Suite D in the Bayside District for a beauty salon. Uh, staff and planning commission recommend approval. The property is zone O2, which does require a conditional use permit for, uh, beauty salons. Uh, there are no exterior modifications proposed or any new signage, uh, and there is, uh, ample parking on the site to, to accommodate this proposed use. And again, staff and planning commission recommend approval. Our next item is by Expert Services LLC at 4937 Broad Street in the Bayside District for a conditional use permit for a car wash facility. Staff recommended denial, however, the planning commission voted six to four to recommend approval. The conditional use permit again is for a car wash facility for automotive detailing services of vehicles, uh, from the applicant's car dealership, which is to the west of this property, uh, but not contiguous with this property. Uh, it, they are proposing that the detailing services are not open to the general public, and there will be no automotive repair on the site. Uh, and all work, uh, will be completed within the garage and enclosed fence area per the applicant's proposal. Planning commission amended condition seven, uh, which was to include no vehicle sales, of course, because there was no conditional use permit for vehicle sales, but also to, to limit it to those, so there was no signage on the vehicles, uh, which would appear to have them for sale on that property. Two speakers, uh, from the community spoke in opposition, dealing with, uh, noting their concerns with traffic noise and incompatible, uh, with the residential character on Broad Street and the adjacent neighborhood. and the adjacent neighborhood. Again, on this one, staff recommended denial, and the Planning Commission recommended approval. Our next item is by Verdag Real Estate and Construction at 4493 Shore Drive at the base, in the Bayside District for a conditional use permit for automobile service station. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval. This proposal is a conditional use permit for a, just a little bit over 4,000 square foot convenience store with 10 fuel pumps. Redevelopment of the site would take over what was an existing motor vehicle sales and a car wash operation that currently exists on the properties. The applicant brought their elevations and designs to the Bayfront Advisory Commission, and the Bayfront Advisory Commission supports the request, noting that it meets the Shore Drive Corridor Design Guidelines. I shouldn't say support, but they found that the, the request meets the Shore Drive Corridor Design Guidelines. Per the Planning Commission's request, the applicant also revised their application to include bollards along the parking stalls that were on the southern end of the property, more closer adjacent to the residential properties. There was one speaker, actually, there were two speakers that spoke in opposition, applicant and her husband, and there was concern about health and safety of a fuel, fuel station to be near residential uses. Our next item is a conditional use permit for outdoor recreation facility at, by Brant Feldman at 1708 River Court in the Rose Hall District. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval. This is for, and after-the-fact, conditional use permit for a skateboard ramp, which is considered an outdoor recreational facility in the residential districts. The ramp is not open to the general public. The applicant is requesting a deviation from the front yard setback from 50 feet to 32 feet. This request does allow this ramp to maintain its current location, but also, however, it also meets the requirement to be outside of the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer, which staff does support that proposal in order to keep it out of the, the environmentally sensitive area. The Planning Commission removed Conditions 6 and 7, which deal with requiring a chain to be placed across or in front of the ramp to try to prohibit folks from utilizing it when it's not in use, so to keep the public, general public from wanting to utilize it. And then also Condition 7, which I believe was the requirement for a, an adult or parent to be outside while the, the ramp was in use. Our next item is by Janice Hart at 1203 Gun Hall Drive in the Princess Anne District. This is a conditional use permit for a home-based wildlife rehabilitation facility, and staff recommended approval, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval. This is a conditional use permit again for a home-based wildlife rehabilitation facility on approximately 18,000 square foot parcel. The applicant does, or proposes to care for infant mammals, possums, squirrels, rabbits, and raccoons. At, as how this operates, they will be kept indoors until the last three weeks or they be put outside in the proposed outdoor enclosures, where they will be acclimated to the outdoors, and no animals will be released on-site. There was one speaker that spoke in opposition with concerns about other predatory animals in the area and the potential for the animals to escape the enclosure area. As with many of these rehabilitation facilities, they do work with another licensed person to help assist them to make sure that they are operating in accordance with all the Our next items, 15A and 15B, are by Home Depot USA, Inc. at 2324 Elson Green Avenue in the Princess Anne District. This is a conditional use permit request for bulk storage and truck and trailer rental. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval. The conditional use permits for bulk storage yard and truck rental, the staff has worked with the applicant to find a concise and functional layout that will provide the best screening available to Elson Green as well as Princess Anne Road with the new alignment of Princess Anne Road, and to try to limit the potential impact of traffic on the property of vehicles lining up to obtain seasonal mulch and to look at and to obtain or rent small construction equipment. It is impacting a handful of spaces, however, there will be a remainder of 490 parking spaces that still meet the requirement for the parking for the existing Home Depot or the retail use that is on the site. There is a request for deviation for fencing and screening, screening requirements, and based on what they are proposing, staff does believe that the proposed fencing and screening will be adequate, along with the existing vegetation that's proposed, that's on-site to help screen the outdoor storage for the seasonal materials from both Elson Green and Princess Anne Road. Our last item, you will be briefed on this item by the Parks and Recreation Staff. This is for an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to Adopt the Virginia Beach Active Transportation Plan, which will supersede the Virginia Beach Bike Ways and Trails Plan of 2011, dealing with, of course, their bike ways and trails. There was a significant public outreach prior to and just at the beginning of the pandemic as they worked through this new plan, and again, Parks and Rec, Elaine Lynn, will provide you a briefing on this next week, or is planning to provide you a briefing on this item next week, but staff does recommend approval, and the Planning Commission also does recommend With that, I stand by for any questions.
Mayor, I see Councilmember Moss, and then followed by Councilmember Moss, Vice Mayor Wood, and Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Moss, if you'll just pause two to three seconds, you can begin with your comments or questions.
Just a couple. One, request for information. I'd like to get a copy of the ordinance that defines what a hardship is and the criteria that we are supposed to use in evaluating hardships. That's just a general question that applies to a couple items. Second, I noticed on Item 4 that a lot of the alleyway is not yet been turned over to the residents, so it's just one piece, and my question is, if it is our intent to vacate those alleyways, would seem to me that we would want to have some initiation between the cities and the property owners and do that as one comprehensive realignment. That'll take some work, but I've just, it seems like a piecemeal approach. Doesn't make a lot of sense, because once you give one up, the others don't mean much. So we ought to really be thinking about our, a little bit less tactical, a little bit more strategic in our approach. The other question I had was with regards to the property on Broad Street, and you can talk about this later. I have the answer today. Mr. Jones may talk to that. But the curb cuts and the traffic, even though it's not contiguous with the other operation, I just think we only, I want to make sure that that's somehow was addressed. I'm sure the staff got it. I'm not certain why the Planning Commission didn't catch it. And on the Home Depot, this is to you, Mr. Styles. While I can vote on that, I do want to disclose that I have a, I won't call it substantial, but a stock position in the company that doesn't yield dividends in excess of the threshold, but I do want to declare that when the time comes, and I do plan to vote. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Wood, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Wood, and then Councilmember Jones, and then Councilmember Berluci. Vice Mayor Jones, I'm sorry, I'm messing this up. Vice Mayor Wood, if you'll wait two to three seconds, you can begin.
Thanks. Bobby, if you can advance it to number 13. That is well within the Lynn Haven District. I just wanted to make that, that subtle correction. It's not in the Rose Hall District, so if you could correct that. I haven't read the Planning Commission's write-up and whether or not it was done correctly there, but, but that's, that's right smack in the middle of Lynn Haven.
Yes, sir. We will make that correction.
Councilmember Jones, if you'll wait two to three seconds, you can begin your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby, on the Broad Street application, you noted that you, the staff recommended denial. Could you elaborate on that for me, please?
Mr. Tahan, if you'll wait just two to three seconds, you can begin.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones, staff recommended denial because there was a concern of a automobile-related use to be operated directly fronting the Broad Street. A lot of the properties that are along Virginia Beach Boulevard in this location of the strategic growth area, in the Pepperbrook strategic growth area, were consolidated together and worked together to, with the automobile uses that front on Virginia Beach Boulevard. So you'll see, there are a couple that are adjacent or down the street from this that had other rezonings or other things, or conditional use permits that combined them together with other automobile uses and allowed them to not have direct access only from Broad Street, which had, could have a particular impact, especially with the existing auto uses that are on the stretch of Virginia Beach Boulevard on the southern side of these properties. Because of that, and because of the fact that this also is associated with a use that is not contiguous with it, so the use that the, the existing automobile sales is further to the west, they would have to access this site from Broad Street, or even if this was just a standalone car wash facility, staff has concerns about the impacts to the adjacent residential uses with, based on how we viewed the plan, that the point was to consolidate these parcels and to utilize them in a way, if they're automobile-related, with the uses that are directly adjacent to them and not to have direct access on Broad Street.
Councilmember Jones, do you have additional comments or questions? If you do, you can begin in two to three seconds.
Thank you, Bobby. I appreciate that. I tend to agree with the staff's recommendation, and I appreciate your comments and the detail of it.
Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you. I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. At this point, we'll conclude with continuing City Council discussion regarding the funding allocation of remaining pandemic funds. We are open for discussion.
Mayor, I have Councilmember Moss and then Councilmember Berluci. Councilmember Moss, if you'll begin. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and colleagues, you know, back in, I think it was October, then again December, we made allocations. And I, as I expressed to Ken Chandler, and I shared with the mayor and the city manager earlier by email, I like the overall allocation reserve, but I would like to remove any ambiguity as to the money going to United Way, that in fact, we really do want to make sure, or it says Virginia Beach nonprofit organizations. Early in the year, we set aside $2 million for the food bank, and I want to make sure that the food bank does get a specific designation, our communicating our intent to United Way, that we expect the food bank, which has, as they expressed and shared with us, a tremendous shortfall in the community, especially for the acquisition of protein. So I would, would love, you know, as we get this on October the, excuse me, on February 2nd, that we could provide guidance that if it's not 2 million, it's some specific number to make sure that that doesn't get, get lost in the fray, and a priority that we had back in the fall remains a priority through the remainder of the winter and the early spring. With respect to the separate grant closeout paragraph, saying that we may have some additional money here at the end, I would hope that we would be able to, since a lot of it's coming from reimbursement of public safety, that we would be able to accelerate the acquisition and deployment of body cameras to all our police officers and not have to wait the next budget cycle or two budget cycles, and we could get those into the hands of our officers sooner rather than later, and that's all my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berluci, if you'll pause two to three seconds, you can begin your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just really want to take this opportunity to thank City Manager Duhany for what I think is a really accurate and comprehensive report that was shared with us by Mr. Duhany, that included really all the elements of the discussion that we had last week, I think, very well. So I'm really grateful to Mr. Duhany, and I'm excited about the possibilities that, that using the, this allocation of remaining pandemic funds could have for our community. I guess I have a question, or I'm seeking some clarification, as it relates to the small business grants and Virginia Beach nonprofit organizations, because while I think it's, it's excellent that we have a very robust partnership with nonprofit organizations that provide critical services to Virginia Beach residents throughout this pandemic, such as the food bank and, and the United Way and LISC and Workforce Council, for example, I think that there's a gap in needed relief that exists with other small, pardon me, with other nonprofit organizations. For example, the nonprofit organizations that we wouldn't be necessarily directing this CARES Act funding to extend services to, but who need relief as well, the same types of relief that small businesses are in need of. For example, many nonprofits that are operating throughout our community have had to purchase PPE and have incurred expenses related to making various amounts of adjustments to their operations in order to protect their staff and their, and the people they serve and the people they encounter. And, and I wonder if those businesses would be eligible for relief. Sorry, that doesn't also include the loss of revenue that's been experienced for some of these nonprofits and how that revenue impacts their operations, including payroll operations, in which many, our nonprofit sector is huge in our region and throughout the country, and a lot of people rely on those paychecks to feed their families and make sure they have a roof over their head. So I think it's really critical that we close that gap and allow access to this type of relief for nonprofit organizations the same way we would for non, for small businesses, because in many ways, nonprofits are a small business. They just don't generate the same type of profit that small businesses do, but they still employ people, they still have operations, and they've still been affected by the pandemic. So I guess my question is, would nonprofits be eligible for relief as part of the LISC Small Business Grants for the qualifying expenditures and elements that, that exist through that program? And if not, would, would this council consider creating some type of program that would help to close that gap for nonprofits and the hardships they've experienced and the hardships experienced by their staff? So I know that's a lot of information. I'll just leave, that's, that's the principal part of my question.
Councilmember Berluci, the intent for the recommendation that I've put together for council's consideration was for the, was for United Way to run a similar program to what LISC does for small businesses for nonprofits. So the intent is that the United Way would have a mechanism where nonprofits can apply for funding based on revenue loss or for other related expenses, that they can get a similar grant that the small businesses get through LISC. This should be able to, as recommended for your consideration, it should be able to achieve that need that you identified, sir.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Wood, and then Councilmember Tower will follow. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to, to talk about the separate grant closeout, the, the last few paragraphs in Mr. Duhany's letter, and, and I certainly agree with, with what a lot of other folks have said, but my concern remains making sure there is sufficient funding for but my concern remains making sure there is sufficient funding for this vaccine program. I think we've seen throughout the process that the city is upstaffing dramatically to conduct this vaccination process and for what I'm told we're doing significantly more than any place in the state, which I think is good news. But just the back of the envelope calculations, based on just things I heard Mr. Duhany say today and heard Chief Brazel and others say, you know, I have to think that we're talking several million dollars to make sure that we have the appropriate resources for the vaccination program. You know, I had an opportunity to talk to a volunteer today, and he told me, and I think this is kind of a success story at Virginia Beach, he told me, as a volunteer member of the CERT team, the Community Emergency Response Team, he has been down there at every single vaccination, mass vaccination, including the original drive-through ones. And he's working entire days there, taking time out of his career and everything to help because he thinks it's important. And I think that's great. We have the ability to leverage some fantastic volunteers, whether they be through CERT, EMS, the Medical Reserve Corps, anything like that. But at some point, we're going to have to augment these folks. Hopefully, we're going to get a lot more vaccine than we're getting now. I see that the governor's going to make some sort of speech tomorrow about it, and the president is apparently going to make another speech about it as well. So I'm hopeful that we're going to get a lot more of the vaccine. We're going to have to run a lot more people through it. And I think it's just extraordinarily important that we make sure that there is enough money left over so that we can use it to ensure that we have the adequate resources to do this. I mean, it is a very well-run operation, but, you know, it's people. And at some point, you know, the people are going to get tired and burned out, and we're going to have to augment them. So I would strongly suggest that we make sure that we allocate some funding for that, and a significant amount. And I understand, based on what I'm reading, that Mr. Duhany is going to have a proposal coming forward on Friday about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Tower, and then after Mr. Tower will be Councilmember Rouse. Mr. Tower, if you'll just wait two to three seconds and then begin your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to put in a plug here. I noticed that on the small business grants, there's a specific mention of childcare and restaurants. I hope the reason for that is because in some way, they may be prioritized. I'm not as familiar with the childcare business and the availability of it to our folks who need childcare during this time. I'm sure the demand is tremendous. I have spent some time talking to the people in the restaurant industry, though, and we are talking life and death here for a number of the type of dine-in restaurants that cannot survive on takeout. And I hope we will set aside some of this money. I'm not arguing about the total amount for small business grants. It certainly could be more, I think. But I'll defer, at least for now, to the city manager's proposal, if he would, if we can, if I can get some comfort that the restaurant industry, particularly those that are suffering in the restaurant industry, if they've experienced demonstrated losses, can have some kind of priority or some sort of set aside to meet their needs. That's all my comments. Thanks.
Councilmember Tower, what's articulated here is to suggest that one of the eligible uses would be for childcare and restaurants. It doesn't particularly carve out allocations specifically for them. If that's the desire of council, that definitely can be something that we do in terms of like, maybe exempting, you know, maybe a million out of the 4 million for restaurant uses. If that is something that the council desires, we can make sure is definitely included in the ordinance that's brought before councils, brought before the council for their consideration.
Councilmember Tower, do you have any other additional comments?
Just say.
And begin.
I thank the city manager for that, and I would definitely be in favor of including a set aside as suggested by him for the restaurant industry. I'm open to other suggestions about how to just put any limits on it, or discussions with LISC about their own procedures that may help. But I do favor some set aside for the restaurant industry. I think it's such a vital part of our business and tourism here that we need to shore it up. There's little dispute that they're at the top of the list in terms of businesses that have been most affected by the pandemic, at least those that are, I mean, it's been, as someone said, it's like a tornado, you know, there are some restaurants who have done very, very well. And I'm not trying to get to those, but the ones, the independently owned typically and dine-in restaurants that aren't able to have drive-throughs and takeouts and the like that mitigate them are the ones that I'm worried about. Many of them in Virginia Beach have been around a long time, and it would be tragic to lose them if a little extra money in their direction would keep them alive through the winter until they could get back to the tourism season, where hopefully they'll do much better in '21 than they did in '20. No guarantees there either, though. Thanks.
And along the line, if I could just interject here, a discussion with city manager, you know, the council's feeling on, you know, as far as what we're trying to accomplish here, is, you know, the emphasis of body-worn cameras for the police, and then also with the set asides for, you know, the restaurants. So, you know, if you can convey that, you know, to the manager, and if you can copy myself and the vice mayor, you know, that would be helpful in, you know, going forward.
Councilmember Tower, do you have any other additional comments? Councilmember Rouse, you can begin your comments, please.
Thank you. This has been a great discussion, to say the least. And I think, I think there's a lot of need within our communities as well. And I think one thing we all understand is that our small businesses are going to need, going to need a lot of help, not just for now, but, you know, throughout the year and going forward. There's some businesses that will never be able to bounce back, and there are some who are barely struggling, barely just hanging on. And that includes our restaurant industry there. But so, I would like to really advocate for our, the Hive Office, opening that up. And I know we're going to try to open it up, but allocating more funds to the Hive Office. I think we have to be, you know, and we have been intentional with the, with this CARES funding, but I also think we can be more intentional in making sure that small businesses and small businesses and the likes have what they need, not just for now, but to really be able to survive and thrive. I think we understand that the devastating results of this pandemic is going to be with our business community for quite some time. And so, I just really want to advocate that we provide more than just our economic resource department. Taylor Adams and his staff has done a great job, Jeff Smith, and they have done a great job in making sure the information is there. And our partnership with ODU Women's Business Center, they've done an awesome job. But to have this Hive Office set up, and have all the resources available, and then also partnering with those organizations who cannot go out there and reach those underserved communities who may not know or understand the resources that are available for those small business owners, I think that would be a strong step in making sure that everyone within our city, all the businesses in our city, have what they need to make it through this, but also to nurture their businesses and help them grow within this really, this hectic time. So I'm really advocating for the Hive and the resources that we can allocate towards it, and also for those partnerships with those organizations, whether they be nonprofit or not, with those partnerships, those organizations who can reach those underserved business owners who just don't know what resources are available or how to connect with those resources. So I want to build those bridges within our community. And, you know, Mike, Councilmember Berluci said it best with our nonprofits. I think Councilman Moss and Councilman Tower has really illustrated how bad our restaurant industry is really hurting. And so I think this office would be a great point for them to go and really get the resources that they need. That'd be the end of my comments. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moss, and then Councilmember Berluci. Councilmember Moss, if you'll just go ahead and wait two to three seconds, you begin.
I'm sure this won't happen, but I hope that we can make sure that as we're providing additional money to United Way, it isn't supplanting United Way funds that those organizations already receive to service Virginia Beach, that in fact, it represent a net increase. I'm sure that's the case. But I'm just saying it so that the staff will need to realize that, you know, we are providing funding to increase the level of funding, not to be a substitute for funding that those organizations are already receiving in their baseline. And maybe that doesn't need to be said, but we all know what happened with the lottery money for education. They took money and spent it somewhere else, and there was no net increase. So I just want to make sure that we are truly, our money is a net increase over the baseline. That's my only comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Berluci, you can begin your comments, please.
Yes, thank you. I just want to share a reflection that I hope our entire team can take into account, and that our nonprofit partners will take into account as we consider the deployment of these funds and the allocation of these funds to people who need them. And that is that we really need to make sure to continue to prioritize reaching underserved constituencies within our community, and reaching people who may not necessarily always be plugged into what we're doing as a city. I can't tell you how many times I've been in the community with people who say, own small businesses, and they say, "We didn't know." And it may appear obvious to us, because we do a great job of issuing press releases, and we share with the public, and we post it on Facebook, and, but it's amazing how many people don't know what's available until the applications have closed. And one of my greatest sources of frustration is about having to tell people that we did have a program, but that the money has been allocated and the application process is closed. And so I'm excited about the possibility of reopening this. But I would encourage the city, as well as our nonprofit partners, to consider what other opportunities we could have to share this, these opportunities with more people. And I'll give you an example about a previous presentation that we had that showed the preponderance of grants. EDIP Part E grants were allocated to ZIP Code 23451. And I'm certain there is a high concentration of businesses that need relief within 23451, but I don't think it would be a fair assessment to say the majority of Virginia Beach businesses exist within that ZIP Code. And I think that time and time again, we see that people who are connected, people who are in the know have access to these programs, and people who aren't connected, and people who may not, who are busy saving their businesses, and taking care of everything that they're facing during this difficult time, aren't aware of these resources. And we've got to do a better job of that. And I hope that we will. Thank you.
Mayor, there's no other virtual hands raised. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, council members. I want to thank you for a very good discussion and, you know, the manager's presentation and with Dominion. I think we covered a lot of ground today. But before I close the meeting, I just want to really reemphasize what Aaron Rouse, you know, said about, you know, get the Hive opening, and, you know, what other council members said about helping out the restaurant industry and making sure we get the body cameras. We have multiple needs, but right now, we are poised to move in the right direction, you know, in a very, very, very positive way. And I think, you know, once we get the Hive open, once again, it's going to show that we're open for business. And the other thing is too, I know the manager is working on improving, you know, the planning and permits operations to make things more user-friendly for everybody. And, but once again, the focus on helping the small businesses, you know, to start up, and then, you know, giving them the ability to not only survive, but to thrive in the future, you know, to expand and multiply and, you know, continue to grow even during the tough times. And, you know, once again, we're not all that far, you know, from our summer season opening up. Memorial Day will be here before we know it. And I know we had a, you know, delay in, you know, the talk about the, you know, the Tourism Authority, but I asked the manager if he would be willing to look into other ways that we can, you know, start immediately looking to improve our convention business and perhaps alternatives that will really, you know, open up the doors aplenty for moving forward and getting a more robust and, you know, a good system going. We understand, I saw in the paper today, we're going to be moving forward, hopefully with the Dome Project and many other things. But once again, all over the city, you know, we have to look forward to, you know, improving those opportunities to help people, individuals, and businesses that have the needs. But then again, that's what defines us as Virginia Beach. Thank you all, and look forward to being in touch. We are adjourned.